Welcome, everyone, to the September 23 City Council Work Session. We have two items today. One is the Human Rights Commission Work Plan and the Etters of Bethel Economic Development Task Force Report. So let's start out with the Human Rights Commission. I'll just invite them up to the table.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Good to see you all again.
Good to see you.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor Piercy and City Councilors. Thank you for taking the time today to meet with the Human Rights Commission. I haven't had the opportunity to meet all of you, but I am Jennifer Yedus-Vanderhagen and have been working with the city since June as the Human Rights and Equity Analyst. And so I've had the great opportunity in my first few months to help these folks in the Human Rights Commission build their work plan for the next fiscal year. Today, we're going to share with you a report about the 2015 work plan and the progress that was made, as well as have our proposed work plan shared with you for your approval. I'm here with Andrew Thompson and Chris Nunes, who will walk you through both of those documents, and of course, you have copies in your AIS. And after a short presentation, we'll have the opportunity to answer questions and have a discussion about how the Human Rights Commission can best support the City Council in achieving your stated goals for this coming year. In my short time at the city, it's become very clear to me that the boards and commissions that are appointed by this council play an important role in creating the vibrant community that we all get to share. And so I just want to take an opportunity to thank the Human Rights Commissioners for their service to the city, and, you know, both to thank them for the work that they've done in years past and the very thoughtful approach they took to building this year's work plan. I think you'll find that the work plan addresses issues that the community is currently talking about, and that's part of what they were hoping for. This year, the HRC hopes to identify new ways to be a resource to the City Council. And the City Council and HRC have identified goals that support one another. And so I think this synergy offers great opportunities for both shared strategies and collaboration. So now I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chris to talk about the work plan.
So thanks again for having us here today. We worked a lot on last year's work plan. I just want to, it's in your packet, I just want to give you some highlights. I know Counselor Clark was asking us last year about what we were going to do to create more measurability, and what we did essentially was create very specific tasks that we could check off that all worked to achieve the overall objectives that were the big picture kind of objectives that you'll also see in our 2016 work plan. And so I think with that strategy, we were able to do a lot, we were able to check off a lot of those things. And even new requests, emerging issues is what we call it, we were able to put in a lot of those within existing categories instead of having them stand alone, even though they were human rights related. If they've served one of those, we would add a new task and we could create, we can measure that success. So one of those things that we got done was a lot of events that we hosted, organized, participated in, and funded. Some of those include International Human Rights Day event, which is always in December. This last one was so well-attended, the mayor can attest that we had to stop the ceremony and get a lot more chairs out from the back, so we had a lot of people standing up. I think that was a huge, a huge success. And a lot of people got, I spoke to some people there who had never been out to a community event like that, and they came out and learned a lot about the history within our geographical area. We also hosted the Human Rights and Crisis of Youth Homelessness Event, which was a forum, another forum on gang activity in the Bethel area, an ACLU joint forum on police and racial profiling that was attended by then Sheriff Tom Turner, as well as the Chief of Police. Asian Celebration, we always are involved in, and help man the city booth there. So, and we also have the MLK Jr. March and Community Event at the end. We also funded and supported 14 community events, including the North Eugene High School Students for Social Justice Conference, Ending Veteran Homelessness Celebration of Successes, Beyond Toxic's Martin Luther King Jr. Awards at that event. And this year, we also focused on training of the Human Rights Commissioners themselves. So one of those things was the Human Rights Institute, which is hosted by the Urban Justice Center up in New York. So that was staff-attended, Mike Kinison as well as myself. So we were able to go up there and visit the United Nations and learn about the broader spectrum of human rights and bringing that into a local conversation, which was extremely interesting, and we were able to bring back to the group. There were a lot of partnerships, and we focused on collaboration, as Jen said. We're actively working to increase communication and collaboration between city boards and commissions, as well as staff and other community groups. One of those boards and commissions that we're involved in is the Police Commission, we also, and the Civilian Review Board, Community Development Block Grant, Equity and Human Rights Board, Poverty and Homelessness Board. We also promoted participation in recruitment processes, made recommendations for filling vacancies on the Human Rights Commission, and also department collaborations, including we're in conversations with the Smoke-Free Downtown Project. We also did a joint letter of support for the EPD grant application for body-worn cameras, which was, incidentally, just approved this morning for $249,000. So that's exciting. The Mupti revisions, we had some input on, and Environmental Justice Workshop, which was a Clear Lake UGB expansion, Moving Ahead Consolidated Plan, Hate and Bias Reporting and Response, hiring equity and human, and of course, we hired a Human Rights Analyst, so that was also a good win, as well as Broadway Plaza. Within the community, again, at that Martin Luther King Jr. Event, we also presented awards, Martin Luther King Jr. Awards. So that was an opportunity for us to get up there and also celebrate the city's successes and accessibility and promote the Human Rights Commission itself, which is, in essence, also a promotion of this group and the leadership here. So we felt really good about that. And we also worked with the Integration Network for Immigrants in Blaine County, so we always have one or two commissioners usually in attendance of that. We sponsored some recommendations at the city level was intimidation-to-code revisions, letter to the council regarding emergency shelter and camping, and also recommendations to fill the HRC vacancies. At the state level, we also were involved in the Oregon Homeless Bill of Rights Campaign. So that's kind of just a real quick rundown of some of the highlights that we felt really proud of, that we were able to accomplish in our work plan. All the details are in your packets as well, so I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Thanks. I'd just like to echo Jen's thanks for your time this afternoon. So I'm just going to kind of go over the plan for next year's work plan, and then just going to open it up for some questions after that. So basically, as Chris detailed, 2015 was a pretty productive year, and we were able to get a lot of our work plan accomplished. And so when we met this summer for planning next year's work plan, we identified goals that were pretty similar to those last year, and again, really tried to build in some of that measurability that, you know, that we had built into the last work plan. In doing that, like I said, the goals we identified were pretty similar. So the first one was to take a leadership role in fostering respect for social equity, civil rights, and human rights in the community by engaging in education, outreach, listening, and collaborations. Our second goal is to continue to maintain strategic HRC liaisons and engage in cooperative endeavors with community and the city of Eugene, advisory groups, and support the groups that support civil rights and human rights, as well as social equity. Our third goal is to effectively address selected civil rights issues and human rights and social equity issues, areas of interest and concern to the city and the community. And so from those three goals, we identified three objectives, which again, pretty much follow the main three from last year. Those are to maintain effective relationships, advise and advocate on human rights issues with City Council, other city advisory bodies, staff, community organizations, and institutions. Our second objective is to proactively address and respond to discrimination, hate and bias activity, and violence, including systemic and individual racism. And then the third objective, which was similar to the one from last year, was to respond to advocate and educate on community issues of economic inequality, poverty, and homelessness. And then this year, we also developed a fourth objective, which was to kind of help capture some of the capacity-building stuff that we did last year, for example, Chris's attendance at the Human Rights Institute. So that fourth objective is now to develop, strengthen the capacity of the HRC by exploring new opportunities, creating a leadership development pipeline, and supporting the work groups of the HRC. So part of this developing leadership pipeline thing was an idea that one of our commissioners, Philip Grasco, had, is an idea to explore the development of a Human Rights Youth Commission. So the idea was to look at recruiting some youth and helping them form their own mini-version of its commission, and give us an opportunity to mentor some youth in the human rights field, and also just to be able to increase input from youth into our own, into our own work. So then in addition to that, to some of the capacity-building type stuff, was looking at opportunities to identify and participate in trainings and resources that would increase our knowledge of what's being done elsewhere and best practices for addressing human rights issues. And then also, part of that would be to help monitor the internal functioning of the HRC, make sure our new commissioners are fully oriented with the work into the work groups and monitor progress there. And then finally, we have a fifth objective, which is basically just this emerging issues objective that we built into last year's work plan to kind of help capture any emerging issues that come up, so we can be sure and bring those up to you all. So that's kind of a basic rundown of the work plan. We'd be happy to take any questions and answers that we can provide. We did want to also maybe hear from you, some of your thoughts, because as we enact this work plan, we really want to be sure that we're doing all we can to support your work and, you know, the topics that you're interested in. So we recognize that, you know, we're an advisory body to you all, and we want to do the best we can to fulfill that charge. And we know there's a lot of areas of interest that overlap between the stuff that we have in our work plan and the stuff you're interested in. For example, Counselor Evans made us remember, or reminded us at our last meeting that, you know, you all are interested in homelessness, and that's obviously something that we're interested in too. So we just want to make sure we're being the best resource we can be for you all. So if you have any thoughts on how we can do that, we'd really appreciate that. So, thanks, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And having been at numerous occasions with both of you, I wanted to appreciate especially your leadership and the work that you guys have done. You're so thoughtful in your work and in your concern for human rights in the community, and we just appreciate you very much. And I thought that International Human Rights Day thing was just outstanding. It was great. Thank you both very much. I'm going to turn to Greg, because he serves on your commission, and see if he has any comments he would like to make.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Andrew and Chris. A great presentation. I think it accurately captures the work plan for this coming year, 2015, 2016, and highlights a lot of the great work that has gone on over the last year. I would like to point out, as Andrew underscored, the heightened interest and the priority that the City Council has about addressing the homelessness issue, and to also to kind of give my fellow councilors a heads-up that I am developing a work session poll that will be going out shortly to convene a joint work session between the Human Rights Commission and the City Council on homelessness and focusing on some specific areas of interest, criminalization, many housing, and other issues that have raised up to the top, so that we could have an open dialogue about those issues and get the advice of the full commission in terms of formulating a more robust policy around how we approach and address homelessness in this city.
Claire, and then Mike.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for coming today and presenting this really good work and for your work on the commission, and welcome to a new staff member. I'm really glad to see you've got staff on board and you've got a great plan in front of you. I don't have any questions, just a few comments. So I do really want to appreciate the work you've done out in the community, holding forums and collaborating with other organizations to kind of spread the word and raise consciousness about a lot of these issues, and give folks in the community an opportunity to give you feedback and identify issues that they think are important. Also really pleased to see, even though it was just one training, I think it's really a great indicator that you're looking beyond just how we think about human rights here in Eugene and connecting with the broader human rights work that goes on in the nation and internationally. And I think that can really inform not only issues, but strategies around helping us as a community address some of those still lingering issues. And I love the idea of a youth Human Rights Council. I think that's a great idea. It could really energize the work and bring new ideas, not only about issues, but also strategies and tactics about how we reach out in the community to, you know, the up-and-coming next human rights advocates that are out there. And then I just, you know, this is more a comment for, a general comment for folks who might be listening at home. You know, the Human Rights Commission has historically been a place where individuals can come to for support and resources and recourse when they experience personal discrimination in the community. But as pointed out by some of what Counselor Evans just mentioned, your commission also has a mission that at times requires you to bring hard issues to this council, and even perhaps challenge how we handle various issues in our deliberations. And you help us stay mindful of the human impact of government policy, some impacts that may be completely unintended on our part. So I think you play a very important role in a kind of check-and-balance way that at times this council as a group may find frustrating, but is important for us to have that, it may look like conflict, but it's also how we agitate and make things better. So I just want to call that out and acknowledge it, and thank you for that work. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank all of you for your work and for the report and the plan. Appreciate that very much. I want to take off on what Claire has just said, because I think it's really important. I think there's, I think that the role of the Human Rights Commission, having served for a couple of years on it myself, it is appropriately a bridge-building opportunity. The work can be helping people understand one another better, and in my opinion, should be. Now, I've served at this table, and I'm in my ninth year of this now, and it's a little different today than it used to be when I first started. It's one of the things I'm proudest of, is the fact that while we don't always agree on stuff, we treat each other a lot better than other councils of the past have, and we speak more nicely to one another, and we try to be more respectful. And so one of the things that we don't do anymore is impugn one another's motives, which used to happen at this table years and years ago. And I'm really happy that it doesn't. So as I look at Objective Number Three, and Action 3.2, and Task Number Three, you hit on something that I'd really like to ask for your help with. There's a big conversation in our community about homelessness, and one of the phrases that gets used all the time, I think, is intentionally incendiary, and keeps us from helping in the way we should, keeps us from working together in the way we should, and it's using the phrase "criminalizing homelessness." Now, Counselor Pryor did a wonderful thing a couple of years ago when we were talking about issues around downtown, and he said, "There's a difference between somebody's condition and their behavior." We work really hard to talk about behavior when we make rules and laws and ordinance around what is appropriate and what isn't, and not people's condition. That phrase, for me, is difficult, because it makes it sound like we're intentionally criminalizing someone's condition, and I don't believe anybody at this table's doing that. So I think you can help us build better bridges by dealing with that language in a new and different way, and maybe helping us think about that differently, so that we might stop throwing verbal barbs at one another amongst people who disagree on how to handle this issue the best way. Okay? Thank you.
A couple of issues that you have here that I wanted to put some light on, and actually, it's on the hate and bias activity part. And I've just been, with a report that we do annually, I'm here routinely in the community. We still have serious issues with hate speech and hate crime, and really like, would really appreciate you delving in into that more and coming forth with some ideas of how you think we can move the dial on that. There's some, it feels like somehow we're not making as clear as we want to as a community about what we don't want to have happen in that regard. And we still have people on a basis of race or gender and other experiencing people treating them very badly. So just more discussion, more help on that would be really useful for us. And then I did want to bring up this issue, because I've been getting a lot of mail about it, and it is not going to go away, is a refugee issue that I think at some point, we, like places all over the world, are going to be confronting having to be a place where people can come who are escaping from horrific circumstances, and you may want to think about our role in that regard as a city too. And Greg, you wanted to have a...
Well, I just, I just want to, in a collegial manner, address something that Counselor Clark said, in keeping with the spirit of us, you know, being a collaborative body. You know, I've lived in this town for 30 years, and I know the difference between criminalization in terms of behavior versus criminalization in terms of your being, just being your personhood. And having been profiled, racially profiled by the Eugene Police Department 44 times in 30 years personally, having seen my children, my son, who was last stopped about a year ago before he left for the Air Force on his bicycle, and asked to produce, you know, "Where did you get the bike? It's too expensive for you to own. Where's your receipt at? Where are you going? What are you doing? Why are you doing it?" When he's leaving from work, going home on his bicycle, is something that we need to deal with. That's criminalization. Is criminalization because of your appearance? Is criminalization because of your skin color? Is criminalization because of what you wear or not wearing, or even the condition of your clothes or what you were looking like? And so we have to grapple with those issues, so that we can clearly separate what criminal behavior is versus what just being a regular person, just trying to get along, is. And I have, I have problems with that, both personally and for the people that I represent, whether they share the same skin color as I do, or are of different persuasions. But we have the same issues in this community that people have all over the country. And until we confront it and face it and deal with it, we will continue to have these problems, and they won't get better, they will get worse. Mark my words, you know, we are just an instant away from being Charleston, South Carolina, or Baltimore, or Ferguson, Missouri. And there are things that I hear that a lot of you may not hear at this table. So that's my, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it, Mayor.
Alan, and then Chris, and then Mike.
Yeah, thank you for coming today. It's very important work, what you all do, especially in these days where racism and hate are on the rise. So I very much appreciate your work, and I think it's critically important stuff that goes on. It's very important for you to keep doing what you're doing and doing it even more, if possible. Apologize for being late. One of the things that we talk a lot about at this table is the triple bottom line, and that's the economics, environment, and equity. And the one I wanted to talk about was the social equity part, which really relates to what the Human Rights Commission does. And one of the things that you have in your report were key partnerships, and one of the things that I was disappointed in not seeing on there was reaching out and trying to work with the Sustainability Commission, especially on the social equity parts of things. I know that the Sustainability Commission has made some efforts to reach out and try to find some common ground to work on things, but that's such a tough issue to deal with, and it pervades a lot of different issues. And I think that working together, you can accomplish more than working separately on that. So I'd really encourage the Human Rights Commission to take that challenge to work with the Sustainability Commission, the Sustainability Commission's challenge to work with you guys, to come together on some of these issues. I think there's lots of places where your, the two commissions crisscross and overlap, and can be a very powerful voice if joined together. So that's my challenge to you guys, and I hope you'll take that up.
Chris?
I'm glad that both Mike and Greg have brought up, and actually, there's a synthesis between what both of them are saying, that to me is core to what could be the greatest help you could provide to us. And it's around the fact that both are right, and there is a nexus that says, while we may not have a law that specifically says it's against the law to be African-American or to be homeless, we still have an enormous challenge with regard to prejudice and discrimination. And that can pervade not only everyday life, but it could also pervade some of our institutions and ways in which we do things. If profiling is institutionalized, then you're not necessarily criminalizing a condition, but you are exercising a level of discrimination and prejudice that can be incredibly destructive, as the story goes. And I think that is what we need to identify and to come up with constructive solutions for how to deal with that discrimination and prejudice, which I think is still very, very much a part of the material life that many people in this community experience and must be dealt with. The chief sends the City Council regular communications about things that are going on, and one of those communications deals with biased crime. And we regularly receive communications about biased crimes that are going on constantly in this community. Interactions between people in the community, interactions between the police and people in the community, where at the bottom or in some underlying root way, it results in some sort of a display of prejudice and discrimination that is totally unacceptable. That, I think, is one of those areas where we need to make enormous effort and really work on. And so it's not just about race, or gender, or any of the protected classes, or about poverty, or about homelessness. It's about focusing on the ways in which we can be much better at eradicating the prejudices and the discriminations that just are almost unconsciously there. And many of the issues we deal with downtown, many of the communications I read about people who are unhappy with downtown are, whether unconsciously or in some other form, are dealing with issues of prejudging. I look at somebody, and I prejudge what I think they are. And that prejudging, that prejudice, I think, creates enormous problems that don't need to be there. How can we, as a community, address issues of prejudice so that we don't go there when we don't need to? So yeah, there's a lot around behavior we need to deal with, there's a lot around condition we need to talk about, but I think even deeper than that, we need to... condition we need to talk about, but I think even deeper than that, we need to deal with discrimination, prejudice as fundamental issues in this community.
Betty, and then...
Thank you. Previous speakers have mentioned a couple of things I had on my list here, but the latest one is prejudice. And I had on my list Broadway Plaza. And I noticed you said you've been, had some dealing, some discussion of that. Do you think that there is prejudice, the reason people are so concerned about that area, is because of prejudice against the way people dress, or the way they look, or the way they talk? Something you've dealt with, have talked about?
Yeah, I think the, some of the discussions we had around Broadway Plaza were discussions of turning it into a park area, using park rules on it. And I think, yeah, some of that was just in response to, you know, the population down there, and I think some of that had to do with possibly some prejudice and just concerns about behaviors and things like that. So, I don't know if there are further comments on that, but...
I'm concerned about trying to turn it into a park and excluding people during certain hours, and I think it does result from a prejudice against certain kinds of people, which would be mainly poor people. And I had on my list here, social equity. What do you think is the, we talk about it all the time, but I don't think anyone does any, I don't know whether we can do anything about it. But what do you think is the biggest problem in the area of social equity? And is there anything that government could do about that problem?
As far as what government can do, I guess, you know, that's kind of a difficult question. I'd like to think more about it, but I think that's, you know, one of those things, the fact that you're asking that question, I think, is promising, and I think that's, you know, just shows to some of the forward-looking policies that you all have been trying to work on. And, yeah, if we can be of any help in there, I think that we'd be very happy to do so.
I know it's a difficult question, but we always talk about we're working for social equity, and what does that mean? What are we doing? What could we do? Well, for income equity, I guess we could do something about a living wage ordinance. That's one thing, perhaps, but I don't know if you've discussed anything like that or not. And then I'd like to know what changes, I don't know how long you've been on the commission and the staff person's new, but what changes do you think have occurred because we have a Human Rights Commission? Anybody have any?
I think the, if you look at our work plan, the kind of, the kind of work that we do most throughout the year is funding community events. And I think there's, there's a huge strength with getting people out there and experiencing people that they wouldn't normally interact with, and learning about each other. And I think that, I mean, that kind of work is, you know, is always hard to measure, and that's where, you know, on the work plan, we measure it by how many we have and the kind of, and the diversity of those types of events, ranging from Asian Celebration and Martin Luther King to International Human Rights Day. We tackle a broad array of different subject matters, so we try to make sure people come out to those. The attendance is, is the only way we can really measure it. It's hard to measure how many people walk away from that with a change in their, in their perspective or not, but the fact that they came, you know, means that they were impacted to some degree about it, or they were moved to some degree about it to actually come. And I think that's, that's kind of the way we've chosen to kind of tackle it. I really think it's about education, it's about learning about each other, just like what Counselor Clark was saying about being respectful and listening to each other and not judging their motives, but actually having that conversation and trying to understand the other perspective. And if both parties are doing that, I think we'll go very far in strengthening the community and watching out for each other.
I agree that some of the most important things in life cannot be measured, which is why I think it's, education system's going in a totally wrong direction. But, yeah, I think, and also, when we talk about getting rid of prejudice, we can't do that by laws, I don't think. We can get rid of actions, but I do think, I think you're right, that associating with other people and seeing them and hearing their point of view is a good thing. So, okay, that's all. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to expand on two things. One, to my good friend Greg, I agree with what you said. I agree with how you said it, and then I agree with, to the point that I have a good friend who, in our community, who's African-American and was stopped about a year and a half, two years ago, and wasn't treated well, wasn't treated fairly or right. And I went and sat with him in the auditor's office and talked about it with the police auditor, which is why he's there, and advocated for him as well, because I thought, from what he described, he was treated badly. And that was resolved well, as I understand it. And I just wanted to say to you, too, is that Claire and I and members of the Human Rights Commission worked quite a long while on the police commission to develop the bias-free stops and bias-free policing policies. And they have begun to be put into place by the chief, and if they're not working as well as they should, I certainly want to know if they need further refinement. And I know that our police auditor would want to hear of instances where those were not being put into play well. But we did work quite hard and quite a long time to try and make that better. And certainly, there's always more we can do. But I think Chris touched closer to what I was trying, what my comment was trying to say, which was, I could use the help of folks who dig deep in this all the time to give us better language as a community for how to have this conversation. And I wasn't speaking as an issue of race so much as directly about homelessness. We have a group of folks who regularly come and speak with us during public forum time on Monday night council meetings, and write us emails on a fairly regular basis on this issue, on the issue of homelessness. And often, the tenor and the tone of that is very accusatory. It's almost angry at some times. That, and it seems to imply that our intent is to intentionally criminalize that state of homelessness, that condition, rather than what it is that we're making ordinance around, which is behavior. So, what I'm asking is, can you help that group of folks who have a grievance and are right for one, they're unhappy, and the council who's here to deal with it, talk about it differently, so that we can do a better job of solving it? Is what I'm really asking. Thank you.
So, I think this is a rib... Okay.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. I'll be after you.
Okay. You know, one of the, picking up on this theme a little bit more, one of the things I think is very helpful for commissions and boards with regard to advising and providing input into the council, is that they, they do two things for us. They can analyze and investigate issues that we don't have time to do that, and you guys do that in spades in a lot of areas. The other one is to help us come up with solutions. One of the things that came up in my mind when we had 43 people out of 67 come and talk to us about homelessness the other day at the public forum, out of the 43 people that talked about that, one person mentioned a solution. Only one. And so, having a focus on solution-oriented discussions is, I think, real important. So, a lot of us know what the issues are. Having them framed nicely and compactly and concisely is of great help, but also helping us craft the solutions is a good one. I wanted to also follow up on what I was talking about before with the Sustainability Commission and the power of these two commissions being able to work together and give you some examples of where I thought that together you could make much bigger impact than if you did it separately. And three examples are microhousing and homeless shelter. That's both, that's a social equity issue that has a sustainability component and a human rights component, that together you can make that a bigger issue when both of those things get forwarded together and working together and moving those forward. Second one, access, access to and expansion of the transit system. And that's a social equity issue that has both a sustainability and a human rights part, together working and promoting that, I think, would be much more powerful than doing it separately. And then finally, the economic development, food, the food cluster in particular conversations that are occurring right now, and then Envision Eugene around the industrial lands, and there's a conversation that we're having, and the jobs that are created out of that is both, and the types of jobs that are created about that, and how they get, how that gets done on a land use perspective and a jobs perspective, has both a sustainability and a human rights perspective to it, and moving them together forward can have a bigger impact than having them moved separately. So, those are kind of three concrete examples where I think the Human Rights Commission and Sustainability Commission can work together to, where those things of sustainability and human rights join up and overlap.
Greg has another comment, and then we're going to move on, because we want to get ready for the next, do a motion.
Last, real briefly, parts of what Counselor Taylor's comment is, one of the ways that we can be proactive in terms of breaking down these barriers, in terms of how we do business with emerging and disadvantaged business enterprises, minority business enterprises, and women business enterprises. We have done an abysmal job, not just this city, but other public entities in this community of doing business with emerging minority and women-owned businesses. It's been better with women-owned businesses, but not by much. And I dare anybody to go out and see the various construction projects for the University of Oregon, to Lane Community College, where I work, to MX, and point out and pick out how many people of color are working on those projects, let alone the ones that are getting contracts, as subcontractors or other contractors. We have to do a better job of doing that. I've talked to contractors of color, I've talked to women contractors, who've told me it is incredibly difficult to do business in this town. And it's a fam, it's a family and friends plan. And one of the things I hope to do before I leave this council is that we expand the family and friends plan to exclude those of us who don't look exactly like the traditional family and friends. So, I think that that's something that we need to be very cognizant of, and especially that we need to be aware of as we build a new city hall.
Greg?
Good, let's head.
So, I'm going to call for the motion in a minute. I just want to say something really quickly here. One way you might be helpful in this conversation about the difference between targeting people and behaviors and not, and how to do one without doing the other, there might be a series of questions we could ask ourselves as we approach an issue that could help us understand what we're really thinking and why we're really bringing it up, and making sure that we're trying to deal with the right thing and not trying to get, just get rid of something we're uncomfortable with. So, there may be something that you guys can work on that has to do with the kind of questions we should ask ourselves around the policies and decisions we make and how we respond to things. The other is, if we, if you bring speakers in and you want us to be, to learn from those speakers or learn from that, my experience is we don't all get to the same events. And so, I would really say, if there's something you really want us to get, it's better if we have it around the table than to expect everybody to get to an event, because it just doesn't happen that way. So, just think about that. Use a community forum part of our council meetings, you guys get to the front of the line, and use that to talk to us about things that you think we need to be paying attention to. That's another thing. And then I invite you right now, we're beginning a conversation about how to make our downtown more comfortable, safe, and enjoyable place for all community members and visitors. And that's a question fraught with all these things that we have been talking about around the table. So, I invite you into that discussion to help us do it in a thoughtful way. Okay? All right. Motion?
I move to approve the Human Rights Commission FY 2016 work plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven. Seven in favor and one in opposition and one absent. Okay. Thank you. George Brown's not here. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks again. There was no opposition, there was only...
I just said...
You just said one in opposition.
I said that, I meant to say...
One in absent.
Yeah. I think you...
Council policy.
Okay. It's all right. It's all good. We were here to help. No problem.
Thank you.
How most people get elected to chair is they're absent. That's how they get elected to chair.
I nominate George to...
Next up is Bethel Economic Development Task Force report.
So, I'll introduce Ethan Nelson. Ethan has been leading this effort from a staff side. He's the Waste Prevention and Green Building Program Manager, and coincidentally, I think you also received an email yesterday that he is going to be transitioning into the Intergovernmental Relations Manager position for probably up to the next year. So, as he brings the task team members up, I'll just keep entertaining you with my great voice. I'll let Ethan introduce the task team.
Great. Glad this is on there. Let's get Ethan Nelson from Planning and Development Department. Got a lot of fun, engaging stuff that we want to share with you, and so I want to jump right on in, but I wanted to make sure that if, Counselors and Mayor, if you didn't have copies, hard copies, that we've got additional hard copies right here, in case you didn't bring your pack with you. First off, I'd like to say thank you for your support, and also to introduce our task team members that are at the table with us and also in the audience today. And we've have, and they'll have a chance to, these are representatives for different aspects, themes that we're going to be talking about today. And so, I'll just go down the line of Clayton Walker and Debbie Farr, Julian Gross, and Larry Newby, Goducks, Newby. But we also have other members of the task team, including Colt Gill from Bethel Schools, Commissioner Pat Farr in the back from Lynn County, Laura Hammond from PDD, worked a lot on our communications and outreach, as well as Zach Galloway from PDD, who's our planning liaison. And that's it. Although Denny and Ann, they get to carry the torch forward, so. So, I wanted to give a little bit today for a presentation. We've got an overview, talk a little bit about some of the process, the objectives and the outcomes, and then we'll dive on into a little bit of communications. And if we have enough time, we hopefully can get through our presentation. We've got a great short video from Bethel School District focusing in on some of the workforce development activities that are happening at Willamette High School. But what I'd like to start out with is really a big picture, and so we've got a few slides we'll walk through, and that really what we were after is taking a number of the existing plans that were in regards to Envision Eugene and/or the Regional Prosperity Plan, and being able to then come up with a, identify strategic actions that can be taken in the Bethel area. And so, we really looked, and as you can see on the map here, Bethel area is not just one ward. As a functional unit, we, as a task team, really identified that this is a much larger area and that it crosses ward boundaries and neighborhood association boundaries, as really in a functional manner. As I had said, we had a very talented team, yeah, a talented team of collaborators, a very public-private representation from, representatives from public agencies, community groups, and businesses, both within the Bethel area and also across town, to help us with having expertise and being able to showcase what Bethel is. So, we have a great team. Within our process, we really looked at this, and this is something that our downtown development team really has honed on in, and I think that within PDD and the city, we've really started to look at something that's... to look at something that's very tactical in regards to plan, team, and resources. And that that is a model that we're working to replicate, not only we used it in downtown, but now with Bethel, and we hope to be able to utilize that in other projects across town. And a big part of that is being able to, well, last year, it was a phenomenal season for the University of Oregon Ducks football team, and we were having our meetings around the same time. And so we kept on looking at the analogy of our vision of Envision Eugene, our Regional Prosperity Plan is the goal or the win of the game, but what we need to do and need to focus in on is much more of the tactical aspects of getting the ball five yards every play. And so what we really looked at is that within our project, that we would have a tactical plan that get us down the yard or down the field, five yards, and so that we've set ourselves up for success for the next endeavor. And so, and I think out of the visioning, one of the key elements that I'd like to highlight is the everything right here. It was a concept that was brought on up and it really resonated with the task team as far as what is the vision, where are we going with the work that we're all engaging in. This is, I wish I was an engineer, because this is a perfect example of an engineer's slide, way too much detail, but it gives you all of the strategies, and these are also incorporated into the document that you have right in the center at page eight and nine. And this is really the meat and potatoes, or the tofu and kale of the effort, of really trying to identify what is it that we're doing. And so the way that I, kind of the rubric to think about this, is that we have these themes, and those themes are really this vision of place, people, and prosperity. And then within those themes, you have topical areas that are going to be used for communications. And those you'll see in the documents that are in front of you, both in the map and the final report, to really try to talk about concepts in a little bit deeper of an air way, but also at a broad enough communications that folks can glom onto it fairly easily. And then you get on into the strategies, and those themselves are very tactical, implementation-oriented, that'll have leads, actions, and then a timeline associated with them. Once again, the main focus of the work that we were doing is to recognize that kind of implementing Envision Eugene through and our economic development plan is not one agency's task. It is a number of agencies, a number of partners throughout the community, bringing resources to implement a combined vision. With that, well, before I jump on into this, one of the things that our presenters will be talking about is once again, going back to that themes around place, people, and prosperity, you'll see some of the topical areas that are in the communications and then the strategies. And so I'll turn this on over to Debbie Farr, who's going to talk a little bit about place.
Thanks, Ethan. I loved Ethan's comment about football and was it tofu and kale? We have great football at Willamette High School in Bethel. And we have lots of restaurants that serve meat and potatoes, but I don't think we have a single one that serves tofu and kale, yet. I love this quote by Walt Disney, I'm sure you've all heard it before. Walt Disney said, "You can design and create and build the most wonderful place in the world, but it takes people to make that dream a reality." So as a community member of Bethel for more than 30 years, I know that it's the people that makes the place we call Bethel so special and unique. And those of us that are involved in this project are committed to improving the place that we call Bethel. So the target areas here were identified as opportunities with short and near-term strategies to grow and improve our community for the future. Starting with property redevelopment, as probably most of you know, Bethel continues to grow with more new subdivisions, and more businesses in Bethel provide opportunities for our residents to stay in their community to work and play, and shop. Transportation upgrades make it easier for people to get places without using their car, and with increased bus service and more bike and walking paths. The UGB expansion will provide, or will add more jobs providing families with economic stability, and I think we can all agree it's better for our environment if the people who live in Bethel are able to work in Bethel. Ease of entry makes it easier for businesses to start, expand, and grow, adding more jobs and improving the quality of life for the Bethel community. And I'm going to transition over to Joanne in just a moment, but I just want to say as a Bethel School Board member, I'm proud of our school district, but so is the rest of Bethel. And that was demonstrated by our passage of the bond measure for nearly $50 million by 73%, which put us in the top 1% of all bond measure results in Oregon for the last 20 years. That's pretty impressive. And why wouldn't we be proud? Our graduation rate at Willamette is 78%, which is 8% higher than the state average.
Hi, I'm the co-chair of the Act of Bethel Citizens Neighborhood Association, and I want to start off by saying that Bethel, even though we call it a neighborhood, is more like a small town within our bigger city. It has its own unique culture and history and character, and a very charming, small-town feel. In Bethel, we have two main pillars of community. The school district, I would say, is our number one community hub. It's really important to our residents. We're mostly made up of working class and middle-class families, mostly homeowners, and our school district is very important to us. And they've earned our trust over the years by being very successful and achieving outstanding results on a very small budget. The second pillar would be recreation. Our local public spaces and recreation is very important to us as well. And I would add a third, is our faith communities. So speaking of our school district, it's, when we talk about economic development, it's so important to talk about the people of the area. I think that the key to making long-term, successful changes and improving the livelihoods of our residents is to grow our own, to give opportunities to the people who have personal investment in our community, so that they can achieve their vision and make the place that they live in and grow up in the way that they want it to be. The strategy action items that involve people are engage in rebranding of the Bethel area to align with a positive trajectory. We kind of have a bad rap, and so we would, we need to involve the school district, private businesses, the neighborhood association, the public in general, to help reshape our image, to help kind of give us a better image that reflects our vision. Also, to expand the workforce development partnerships. Bethel School District right now has an outstanding career and technical education program. We have nine different CTEs, is what they call them, which you can see in the short video they provided. And we need to improve on that and work from that, so that we can help those kids who are in those programs get into local, private businesses and see what our workforce needs, help those kids get jobs in our community. That would take efforts from the city council, the school district, and the Bethel community. We also would like to expand recreation facilities to increase our expanded need for them. Our community has grown a lot and have put a lot of stress on our recreation facilities, and we just don't have enough to meet our needs. This would increase sports-based activities and tourism in our community, which would help private businesses. Golden Gardens, we're talking about expanding with the UGB expansion. There's also a potential YMCA that might go over by Meadowview. We also need more public meeting spaces. We have Peterson Barn, which is fantastic, but for a community of over 20,000 people, it's not quite cutting it. So hopefully, when they put in that YMCA or expand the recreation facilities, we can get more meeting spaces. I think that's about what I have so far, but I'd like to end with Greg Evans and Ethan Nelson, when they were working on this, they did a lot of footwork in the community and talked to a lot of stakeholders. And one of the best quotes, I think, that came out of that was, "Who are you doing this for?" I think it's really important to involve the people of the area and the community and do it for them and with them, because if we're not, we're just kind of doing it to them, and I don't think that's going to work too well. So, thank you.
Thank you for having us. If this wasn't important, we wouldn't have three city councilors and a county commissioner on this task force. What I feel has made this happen is the UGB expansion is shining a bright light on an area that has been in the dark for too long. And there are businessmen in the community, I know Greg took John Reese to visit with Steve Gilbert, who owns the Gilbert Shopping Center. Steve's comment was, "Don't hurt us any more than you already have." And an example of that would be putting sponsors at Four Corners, right next to the failed VE Tire facility. If you wanted to locate fine dining in Bethel-Danabo at Four Corners, it isn't going to happen because of decisions like that. So in the 15 years that I have lived in Bethel-Danabo, I came on board when Centex Homes came to town and built the Greyhawk and Pheasant Run subdivisions, and I can't tell you how many times I had to undo the unearned moniker of felony flats, and that 4J is so much better than School District 52. My heart bleeds for the area of Bethel-Danabo that Claire represents, the Train Song neighborhood. They need infrastructure help, they need, they just plain need help in that neighborhood. Clayton is the authority on commercial business in Eugene, so at that, I'm going to have Clayton talk.
Thanks, Larry. I really appreciated being asked to be on this, and I want to thank Councilor Evans, who came. My concern, as I told him, is a concern regarding social equity. I think that this area has kind of been left out of the loop, and it doesn't need to be that way. It has needs, it's had great representation, but because of its isolation, because it's just off in a corner, and because of some planning decisions that happened years ago in the 50s, 60s, that we don't have, we didn't have anything to do with that. I'm, getting into 60s is starting to get personal with me, but some of that can be fixed, but it does take the whole community and all parts of it in order to work that out, to get incomes, especially of these neighbors, up to where the average is even. We need just to help work together. And in that vein, Colt Gill, who has also been great to work with, and I really appreciate what he's doing there in Bethel Schools, the creation of a business alliance was brought up. And in that, Colt and I have agreed to help lead that, but I got a list of people that we intend to have on that, many of whom have already agreed. Bethel School District, obviously, E-Web, City of Eugene, the local churches in Bethel, LTD, the Chamber of Commerce, Lane Workforce, Peace Health, banks, the neighborhood groups. And then we get into the local businesses, who have, many of them already said, "Yeah, we'll work with this. We have an opportunity here in Eugene, and Bethel is going to be the focus of it, because everybody coming in 2021 for the World Track Championships is going to come from the airport. They're going to come right down 99." We have time, in these few years, six years, we have time to create an impression, and at the same time, improve the lives of these 20,000 people that live in Bethel. And that's my hope, is that through the efforts of you folks and working together in this alliance, that we will provide some hope and provide some actual jobs and increased wages. That's our objective. We'd like to create some matrices that would measure the success of our work, and beyond that, be able to report back about how it's going. Thank you.
And then I'll just wrap on up with some communications, through some shots of the documents that you have, and then this piece. So we've created three different elements. One is a policy report to tell our story a little bit more in depth. Second is a map, both in English and a Spanish version, that's more of a mass distribution piece to highlight in those topical areas and promote that rebranding or continual evolution of the brand of Bethel into a positive trajectory under the Better in Bethel moniker. And as well, we have a website, and we're in the process of working with councilors Evans and Pryor to hone in on our communications plans and then develop that website on the city infrastructure, so that we can kind of bring home those thematic areas in regards to play is better in Bethel, schools are better in Bethel, to highlight and showcase what the community has spoken to us about. And I think in closing, we have roughly half an hour left for comments, and there is one video that I would say, it's about a five-minute video, and I will send that on out so that folks have the link to that, so that we don't need to watch that right now, but it is very clear, the link between what is happening in Bethel and the educational community around workforce development and the tie with local businesses, and as Joanne said, and I've heard council say, around our economic development, "Grow your own." And so this is an example that is perfect for, to tie all these things together. So with that, I'll turn it on over to...
I'm going to ask the three councilors first to speak, but I did want to make a comment, because it's so important to me. I am so encouraged by this. It's terrific. And I have to say that having watched the evolution of Bethel School District, I watched them when they, you see one after another, kids from Bethel Schools winning this and this and this and this, just growing and growing in their reputation statewide, being acknowledged for their work on sustainability, is one of the best in the whole state, I mean, just a good story over and over again. So I think you're well down the road. And then I've watched what you just did with your new schools, not only the vote, but the thing that impressed me the most, I've told Colt this, is that when you started to build the schools, you invited the kids. You invited the kids to the ground, I remember that so much, and they were engaged through the whole process. They watched the whole thing, and those kids felt like the parents did it for them, the school district did it for them. Those kids feel an investment in them as members of their community, and that is a gift that keeps on giving. So I know there's a way to go to create what we want, what you want, and what you've been working on, I thank you so much for that. But I just want to say that I think in some ways, Bethel is already leading, and so there's work to be done, there's a way to share things that we have in the community better, but I just have to say that we think of Bethel as a wonderful asset for our community, and their schools as a real asset for our community, and we're proud to have Bethel as part of Eugene. So with that, I'm going to turn to Greg, and then to Claire, and then to Chris. Right?
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate your comments around Bethel on that. I just want to thank everybody who's presented, Ethan, who has led this from, and Zach, from a staff perspective, and really kind of brought the bacon home. I want to acknowledge that Colt has kind of reshaped our theme from building a better Bethel, which was kind of something that just came out of my head, to better in Bethel. And as we are evolving in branding Bethel as, you know, a significant portion of our city, it already is, but will continue to be, as you can see, if people come out to Bethel, you can see the continual growth, the number of homes that are being built, the subdivisions that are going up. Even through the recession, we had tremendous residential growth. And now what we are trying to do is be able to match that residential growth with commercial development and other development that will give us an opportunity to grow our community even more, to shape our community in the direction that we wanted to go in, to focus in on the food and beverage industry, which is critical, not only for Bethel, but throughout our community, and moving our community forward as a sustainable industry that will continue to go on for years and years. Food security is critical in the Eugene-Springfield area, in Oregon itself. We need to keep more food here and to build on the successes of our school district. Debbie is being a member of the board, Colt is being our school superintendent, Joanne, you know, leading a tough fight in terms of, you know, our community organization, which is one that should be broken out into four now because of the robust development and the growth in population. We actually have four separate neighborhoods within Bethel at a minimum, and they have distinct, you know, characteristics to those things. So I give Joanne a lot of credit for trying to hold together a very broad coalition of people in that context. And I appreciate what Clayton has done in interjecting his efforts around building some synergy with our business community, particularly our faith community. We have a lot of churches in Bethel. And Larry, are you legally Go Ducks now? We're going to change it to Larry Go Bethel Doobie. And, you know, so that's my time, and go for it.
Claire? Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And I want to thank Councilor Evans for initiating this work and the task team members, both those here today and folks who participated but couldn't be here today, for bringing your great thinking, your passion for, and your commitment to promoting Bethel to the work of this task force. I also want to acknowledge the excellent work of Ethan and his team, and thank him for bringing the team's work forward in a way that makes so much sense. I think these kinds of efforts can end up with broad, hazy, feel-good goals that don't then result in any real change. And the work outlined in this report is specific, builds on current plans and initiatives, and it's a series of first steps. And then the materials created help articulate those first steps and get us started. And as we do the work and start to achieve some of these goals, as Councilor Evans has already indicated, and Ethan too, that, you know, we expect the message to change from building a better Bethel to the brilliantly coined by Colt Gill phrase, "Better in Bethel", which I think is just great. So in addition to helping us launch a coordinated economic and cultural development effort in Bethel, this project provides us with a model for initiating these kinds of conversations in other parts of Eugene, and Larry's already mentioned Train Song, which is a much smaller geographical footprint than Bethel and other underserved areas of our community. So I'm really appreciative, not only of the results from this particular work, but how it's going, I think, have the potential to help us envision and move things forward in other parts of the community to really hitch our wagon to Bethel's success and broaden that out to other parts of town. So thanks very much.
Chris?
Yeah, just thanks, everybody. This is an incredibly exciting opportunity. And Claire and Greg have already touched on a couple of the points, and just to reinforce them, what was particularly exciting to me was on a couple of levels. The first one is, you can approach a giant need, which is, let's say, improving Eugene, improving the economic community, the people, the place, and the prosperity. And it can be so large that you can't really get very much done simply because it's so big. And so this points the way to breaking it up into smaller, doable pieces. And I have to give credit to both Greg and also to Ethan, but the rest of the folks who said, "Let's break this up into a chunk that we can actually accomplish something in that is more tangible than just a lot of philosophy and strategies." There's actual tactics in here, there's actual things that can be done that I think are very exciting. And by breaking it up into pieces, that's exactly how you can get things done. The second exciting part about that is, what Claire mentioned, is I see this as the model for doing this through the rest of the community. I could see every other part of the community benefiting from this same kind of approach. You chunk out Eugene into its different components, and then you address them exactly the same way this was done. So this, to me, is a model for how we can do this in the rest of the community and create prosperity and good sense of place and productive people throughout the community, but not in a way that doesn't get anything done. And to reinforce what has also been said, the notion of moving from building a better Bethel to better in Bethel, you can see that "better" is the word that's emphasized out, because you don't make a promise that you can't deliver. And if we said Bethel is better right now, before we've done a lot of the building we want to do, then that's a promise that we haven't really built yet. So the brilliance of starting with building and then moving into emphasizing the "better" is very smart in that that gives us the opportunity to create what we want to create and then use that as the brand. So building this with "better" as the constant theme for bridging, I think, was very clever. And we will then create exactly the kind of Bethel that we want. So we may not be able to use this in other parts of town, but there will be similar themes that we can build for other parts of town. And so that, for me, is what's very exciting. I want to see this replicated in every part of town, because every part of town deserves the same attention that Bethel got. So bravo to the Bethel team, because you've shown the way for how this can be done for the entire community.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo a lot of what my colleagues have said, and thank all of you very much for such excellent work, such important work, and such incredible leadership on this, including the three of you that have worked so hard on this, and Colt, and Commissioner Farr in the back there. I think this is very, very important at this particular time in our community. I think Clayton touched on it well. He said something that was also said by our city manager. On Monday, we had a welcoming sort of minor ceremony for the new president of the University of Oregon. Many of us were there for it. And the city manager mentioned the 2021 aspect, that we have an opportunity that's just, hey, let's, you know, let's do a better job with the presentation of our community from people who come in from the airport. What we have is an opportunity to make a statement to the rest of the world. Here's who we are, here's what's important about what we do here and who we are. And I think that your work is fundamental to how that will go and how the rest of the world sees us when they come in, and I really appreciate that very much. I'd also say that you're serving as an example. Claire and I have the opportunity to represent the Santa Clara and River Road area, which has, it was another area that has kind of a sense of itself in our area and Eugene as a whole. And they're doing work around their kind of land use planning now and doing the script and more specific planning about how they'll build and develop. And I think that the direction that you're showing them about economic development can be a next phase work in that area as well, as Chris has mentioned. So, good job. Thank you very much.
Ellen?
Yeah, good work, good plan. I'm very impressed. It's not pie in the sky. It's very doable, very pragmatic. It seems very well-grounded, and it comes from people who understand and live in Bethel. So I think that's part of what made this a really good plan. To get things done, I think, requires three things. There are three essential ingredients. One is you've got to have a vision and a plan, you got that. And two is you have to have people and effort, you got that. You just need to multiply all of you by 10, but I'm sure that will happen. And then three, you've got to have a great tagline, you got that. So you've got all three of the essential ingredients to be successful and get things done. So I'm on board. I think it's great work. Let us know how we can help make it happen.
So I'd just like to say that I think one of the first things you can do when you're wanting things to be different is to have intentionality, so that everybody else knows where you're headed. That's the most important thing you can do, actually, because until people know what you want, they can't help you do it. So I think that intentionality is really important, and I think we are thinking about having another Regional Prosperity Summit to see how we're moving, and I think this would be a great...
Showcase.
...part of that effort, to talk about what's happening there. So I've put that out there for people to think about. And then I just want to wind us up by saying, because I think we have to say it a lot. Sometimes in our language, we talk about it, and we mean it well, but we talk about what we're going to do to something. And I think we are reminded wisely today and often that they're not asking us to do something to them, they're asking us to do something with them for their future, and their future is our future. So we all have to think about that in terms of the engaging of the Bethel community in this, I heard that loud and clear, and that we are here to assist you, Bethel community, in finding a better future for your families that live in that part of our town. So thank you so much for being here and for your hard work. We appreciate it. With that, I think we're done.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.